Good evening, welcome to this evening's council meeting for Monday, December 7th, Pertaining to the agenda, item four will have to defer till the next meeting because Kim Hilton is unable to attend. And item six C was asked by staff to defer till the next meeting, which is the banners. So with those two items being off the agenda, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as circulated. Counselor Stortaboom, Counselor Martin, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. I'll start off the business end of it. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer, and with me this evening are my council colleagues, Counselor Paul Albrecht, Counselor Rudy Stortaboom, Counselor Gail Martin, Counselor Val Vandenberg. With the staff, we have Darren Light, Director of Corporate Services, Carolyn Mashada, Manager of Legislative Services, Francis Chung, our CAO, Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development, Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, Rory Thompson, our Fire Chief, and as stated earlier, Kim Hilton is unable to attend today. Next item we have is the minutes of the last meeting, that was on November 9th. I need a mover and a seconder.
[inaudible]
Twenty-three, pardon me. Twenty-three. Be adopted as circulated. Counselor Martin, Counselor Vandenberg, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. So the very first item we have is a delegation. We have Rosemary Wallace. She is a school trustee, member of the city's Rec, Culture, and Public Art Committee. And Rosemary, please come up to the mic.
Thank you. Can I take this off?
Sure.
Sure.
Just don't steal it.
I won't steal it.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff and audience. I am here on behalf of the committee. I have a business downtown Langley, so I'm a member of the downtown, from the Downtown Merchants Association. My business is 20573 Fraser Highway. So I am going to speak a little bit about the surprise that came to our committee at the last meeting of the removal of the Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Advisory Committee. I'd also like to welcome two members that have joined this evening from that committee as well, from the Langley Arts Council, Lana Hart and Elizabeth Anderson.
Welcome.
So, at the last meeting, we were informed that the, there would be no RC PAC in next year's committees, and we were kind of alarmed because we had no idea that this was going to happen. And we did get some feedback that the arts would be moved and become a focus area in some other committee or under some other committee, perhaps the Peak. But my feeling is, or our feeling on that committee is that we've worked really hard on that committee to, with arts and cultures and getting them out into the community. And so, yeah, this, this committee developed from that, needing more attention to recreation, arts, and culture. So we don't understand the taking away of that committee and putting it under the Peak Committee. Like the members on the Peak Committee who are very, very passionate members, they do extremely great work in their expertise. And like, like the RC PAC Committee, we are formed of many experts on our committee, and we serve as an advisory to the council. And I just feel that we've done so much work, and you want to continue to do the work. And arts and culture offer so much to a community. As you guys know, and I know that council has supported us on arts endeavors, and we are just getting out there, and we're getting known. You knew, knew at one time we were a Langley Arts Council in the old Coast Capital Building. We made a big presence there. The Downtown Merchants Association have done a series in McBurney Lane that has involved arts and culture. We have probably the largest, one of the largest arts-alives in the Lower Mainland. You guys, the Spirit Square is a great host to arts and culture. The redevelopment of the McBurney Lane serves as a great stage for arts and culture. So I'm just coming to you guys to say that we're, we're upset that that committee is not going to be forefront, and that we can continue to do the hard work that we've done on that committee, both in arts and culture and recreation. So thank you for hearing me out, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming and making your presentation, and council will be dealing with this, some issues later on in the council package. So, thank you very much. Let's see, moving along. The next regular council meeting is December 14th, 2015, that which is next week. Regular council meeting, the first one in January, is January 11th, 2016, Vancouver Metro. Counselor Stortaboom, do you have anything for that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have provided council with not only the chair's update report this past week, but you have the board in brief in your council package. And we're going to be meeting again on Friday. So if there are any questions.
Seeing none?
Thank you for my opportunity to report.
You're off the hook. Counselor Martin, library happenings.
Thank you very much. These are the City of Langley Library events from December 7th to the 14th. The City of Langley Library, with all Fraser Valley Regional Libraries, is promoting the annual Books for Kids at Christmas Project. Because Fraser Valley Regional Library recognizes that pre-reading enjoyment of books is the foundation for a child's success in learning to read, Fraser Valley Regional Library maintains an excellent collection of board books to engage babies, picture books for reading aloud, and early readers for children just beginning to read. These reading foundation collections are in high demand. So at Christmas, Fraser Valley Regional Library invites the community to share their own love of reading by making a donation to the designated Fraser Valley Regional Library. All donations will go directly to the purchase of the children's book. That's my report from staff. I'd just like to report on two other things, if I may. This week, the, the board did an email vote, and the motion that was passed is that, beginning immediately, Fraser Valley Regional Libraries work, will work with local food banks to establish a Food for Fines campaign, in which Fraser Valley Regional Library waives $2 in library fines to a maximum of $30 per library card, for every non-perishable food item donated at the libraries in support of local food banks during December 2015. So if you have $20 in fines and you bring in 10 non-perishable items, they will waive your library fees, your fine, until the end of December. So it's a good way to get rid of those fines and also help out the community. The other thing I'd like to report on, Mr. Mayor, is a conference that myself, my alternate Counselor Albrecht and Counselor Stortaboom attended last Thursday, November the 26th. In regards to the library, it was increasing certainty in uncertain times. And I think both members will agree, it's, it was a fascinating, oh, and Darren was there too, Mr. Light was there too. It was a fascinating conference. I think it's one of the best pieces of information that, that I've been to in a, in a long, long time. It, it talked about things way in the future, what, what we could be looking at, and, you know, where we've come from. I, I thought that all councils should, should hear this, all members of councils should hear this, not just our council, but all members in the, in the Fraser Valley Regional Libraries. So I took it upon myself to write the president of the Lower Mainland Local Government Association, perhaps hoping to get this as, as a workshop up at the, the conference in, I think it's in May. So it, it, I just have to say, it was from 8:30 till 1:00, it was time well, well spent. As I say, fascinating. And I don't know if anybody else would like to add anything to that, but that would be my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Stortaboom?
Well, thank you, yes, and I concur. It was a very worthwhile conference to attend, and I was particularly taken by a YouTube video that was presented called Shift Happens. And I would encourage those who would to go to the YouTube and Google up the Shift Happens. It identifies the changes that are happening in our culture, and how quickly they are changing, and what the future may have in store for us in this very, very short time, specifically with regard to technology and population growth, and the wants and needs of the people of the planet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Albrecht?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo the, the same sentiments as Counselor Martin and Counselor Stortaboom, and add on the fact that the Fraser Valley Regional Library is on the cutting edge. They're, they're really forethinking and progressive in the manner in which they want to serve the customers, and that's our citizens. They're really looking at trends and the effects that our electronic age has in our communications, our learning, and our ability to obtain that knowledge. So there, it was really, really captivating conference or workshop that, while the time flew by, because we were taking in so much information so quickly, and it was, it just left you wanting more at the end of the, at the end of the session. So, thank you very much.
Great. Next, we have an engineering update by Mr. Baumhoff.
All right, thank you very much. So as you know, we've been through a few weather events of, of late, and just wanted to highlight some of the things that the crews were responding to, or lights and flash at multiple locations. Over the last couple of days, electrical contractor was called to reset signals. They plugged catch basins on 203rd and 53rd and, and near the bridge, the debris was removed. So there's a substantial amount of crew time involved over the last couple of nights. Fallen trees along 46th Avenue, 48th Avenue, and 47th, at near, near 208th Street. And as you know, there's, there was a power outage in that area as well, and some road blockages. There's also some Christmas decorations blown down at the city hall. The, the display on the top of the roof was blown down again, so we're going to take another look at that tomorrow, as well as Douglas Park, the Christmas sign was blown down. There is forecast for more wind tomorrow night, so we'll be prepared to respond, respond to that as well. As an update for this month, the lights along 203rd Street have been installed, so the new decorative lights are there. If you, if you drive by, you'll see them. So it's a big improvement. We installed a culvert, a new culvert at 20707 Grade Crescent, where before it was an open drain, and we had some flooding concerns. That has been filled in, so you see it before. It's very, it's somewhat hard to see from the picture, but it's much improved, a new pipe through this, between two side yards, and now the area's been leveled off, and it should be a great improvement from drainage perspective. We installed the Christmas decorations, of course, the, the one centerpiece at McBurney And the Brydon Park Playground is actually slated to be, start beginning in the middle of this week. So that will replace the existing playground play equipment, and replace it with brand-new equipment there. And it's also a expression swing that council supported at the last meeting. And also, just as information, I, I have a short video just to show kind of the, it's a, it's a new swing, so just a quick little demo. So it's a swing that the toddler can go in on the one side, and the parent or guardian on the other. It just gives a good scenario. So that will be going in at Brydon Park. And I just, I wanted to highlight some of the projects that have been completed over the last year, so just a few extra slides. So we completed 48th Avenue, 208th Street to Stafford Middle School. So that included infrastructure renewal, underground, new sidewalks, new curb and gutter, lighting, and also speed humps for speed control. We completed 200th Street Roadworks and Utilities, Fraser Highway to 53rd. The 2015 paving program included 209th Street, 48th to Newlands Drive, 209A Street, 45A to 47th Avenue, 62nd Avenue, 201A Street to 20,600 Block, and Production Way, Fraser Highway to 200th Street, and 200th Street, Production Way to 53rd. So it's a fair number of paving projects. This is a picture of Production Way, Fraser Highway to 200th Street. It also included a new sidewalk and road resurfacing. An ornamental street light replacement, there's four different streets that we replaced the lights. Fraser Highway, 206th Street to 208th Street, Douglas Crescent, 204th Street to 208th Street, Logan Avenue, east of Glover Road, and 203rd Street, 56th Avenue, Douglas Avenue to Logan Avenue. Grade Street culvert replacement project was completed. The community garden and dog off-leash area at Linwood Park was completed. There's still, the handicapped, disabled area garden plots are still to be done. We, we have decided, and we've worked with, with LEPs, with LEPs to relocate the, relocate the planters in front of the existing TIM Center to be used as the handicapped garden plots at the community gardens. So those will be relocated at the time that the Tims moves over into this new facility. And that, that will be a good reuse of those, of those planters. We also completed the Penzer Bike Park renovation. And thank you very much. If there's any questions?
I got a good, a few comments, actually. I'm very glad to hear about the recycling. That's fantastic of the wood. I'd also like to say, good job on the Christmas decorations on the one-way strip where they come down like candy canes.
Mm-hmm.
It looks really good with the lanterns hanging down. Did you have anything to do with that? That's your guys that goes on.
Through, through the department, yes.
Yeah, it, it looks very, very nice. Good job on that. The new streetlights on 203rd, what a huge improvement than those green ones. And the lighting in there is so much better now, especially when it's raining. We just drove through there the other night. I do have a question on the culvert that was redone on 205A. When you come down 205A by the baseball field, and there's a trail that goes through from the baseball fields across 205, and then into the floodplains.
Right.
On the east side, the culvert was dug up there. Is there a railing that's going to go in there? There's a, kind of a muddy trail, and then on the right-hand side, you guys fixed the culvert there, and it's quite deep, and there's no railing there.
Okay, I can take a look at that. I, I don't believe there was a plan to do that. We were, we simply cleaned out the existing culverts.
And it looks fantastic.
And put in riprap on both sides.
Yeah, it looks really good.
So it really did, did clean it up, but I can take a look at that if there's a steep section.
I just walk those trails all the time, and I know, walking by a couple of other people, they had commented on it, and I wasn't sure if there was a safety regulation that we had to have something there or not. And my other question is, what about a crosswalk going across from one end of that street to the other? Because the trails meet, and then 205 runs through. So have, we ever looked at a possibility of having a crosswalk there or anything? Because people are running across there all the time.
Yeah, we could look at the warrants to see if, if there was a warrant for it. We do try to avoid mid-block crosswalks.
Yeah.
And, you know, it has been proven, you know, where you put crosswalks, people tend to put their confidence in the crosswalk as opposed to paying attention to the traffic that's coming by. So even though you might think that a crosswalk might be safer, it could actually, in fact, make it less safe. So, mid-blocks, I mean, we can look at the warrants, but.
What about the possibility of just even installing pedestrian signs on some of those areas, just say, "Look for traffic" or whatever? Because I know a lot of people dart out, they just go right across, so.
We can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Brydon Park Playground, when will it be complete? Any idea roughly?
I think it'll probably be somewhere middle to late January.
Oh, that soon?
Yeah.
Wow, okay, great, thank you very much. We're going.
Yeah.
She's going to bore my granddaughter.
Counselor Albrecht?
Thanks for your report, Rick. I really appreciate the summary of what was accomplished over 2015. I think we have a tendency to forget about all the good work that, that the department does and all the staff, so please pass along my kudos to staff and, and the great work that they do, especially after storm events like last night and that other previous windstorm. It's, it's really taxing on everybody, so thank you.
Thank you. One item I have under the mayor's report is quite exciting. The Jaguar Land Rover facility will be opening this Saturday. So drop in between 2:00 and 5:00 o'clock and take a look at this wonderful facility. So it's quite something to have this luxury auto mall in Langley City. So this Saturday, 2:00 to 5:00.
Will it be riveted?
And then, it's just a soft opening right now.
Yeah, okay, I love riveting.
Then, the business end of it, now into bylaws. Bylaw 2973 is the sanitary sewer and storm sewer rate regulation bylaw. That the bylaw cited as the sanitary sewer and storm sewer rate and regulation bylaw number 2003, number 2494, amendment number 13, bylaw 2015. 2973 be read a final time. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Vandenberg, Counselor Martin. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Next item we have is bylaw 2974, Fees and Charges bylaw, dog license fees. This is the final reading of the bylaw, cited as the Fees and Charges bylaw 2010, number 2837, amendment number 18, bylaw 2015, number 2974. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Stortaboom, Counselor Martin. Discussion? All those in favor? Counselor Vandenberg is against. Next item we have is bylaw 2975, Water Works Regulation bylaw. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the Water Works Regulation bylaw 2004, number 2550, amendment number 16, 2014, number 2975. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Vandenberg, seconded by Counselor Martin. Discussion? None? All those in favor? It's unanimous four. This is, we have to make a change here. The original version of the bylaw read at the November 23rd meeting neglected to include two tables, which have since been added and are before you on the table. And they require that the third reading be rescinded and then adopted as amended with the two new tables. So the motion, so the motion is to rescind the third reading of the bylaw cited as the Fees and Charges bylaw 2010, number 2837, amendment number 18, bylaw 2015, number 2974. And they need a motion to rescind. Counselor Martin, Counselor Albrecht. No discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous four. And this is where we bring it back again. The third reading of the bylaw cited as the Fees and Charges bylaw 2010, number 2837, amendment number 18, bylaw 2015, number 2974, as amended. I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Martin, Counselor Stortaboom. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Oh, it's hard to do when you've got a cold. Parks and Environment Advisory Committee Floodplane Cleanup. The council worked with staff to investigate innovative ways to mitigate, excuse me, increased garbage. I need a mover and a seconder?
Well, I see Mrs. Dunkley is in the audience tonight. I, I liked her idea of what she, she's seen in, in other cities across US and Canada. I guess the question I have is, would we run into union problems here by using, other than city employees? I mean, she suggested the homeless population, and I know other places do that, use them and pay them to, to do some work, but I, I wondered if we'd run into union problems by doing that.
Through the chair to Counselor Martin, that's something that we need to have a discussion with our union on.
Right.
You know, in the past, the union has been, you know, receptive to certain type of work.
Right.
You know, like the communities in pride.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that's something that we may want to look into, but definitely we need to discuss that with the union and see if there's a way to move forward with this initiative. It's a great initiative, we just have to find a way to do it.
Yeah, so there'll be, that's going to be one of many things you'll be discussing, I guess.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Great idea, though.
None? All those in favor? Yeah, just one of those nights. All those in favor? Against? Anything else going on here? Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Advisory Committee Removal of Culture and Art from 216 Committees. That council consider revisiting the decision to remove the culture and public art components from the new terms of reference for the Parks Recreation and Environment Advisory Committee. I need a mover and a seconder? And there's a whereas in here, so the City of Langley stated in their 2012 Terms of Reference for Committees that the Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Advisory Committee is used as a vehicle for achieving certain worthwhile goals and objectives in which such achievements clearly result in a direct benefit to all citizens. Arts and culture fosters a sense of community, identity, spirit, pride, and fosters growth in, in individuals to reach their full potential. Therefore, it be resolved that subcommittee of the Parks Recreation Environment Committee should be created that focuses on arts and culture. So that is the whole motion. So I need a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor, if there is one. There is. Well, I'll move it, just for a discussion purpose.
I'll second that.
The reason I moved it is that council is moving in a direction where they're reassessing some of the, some of the committees that are out there. It's not that they think that arts and culture is a negative in the city, it's just that we're looking at maybe having a task force set up under our Parks Committee, and this would be one of the task forces that would be set up under this. So this is, this is what council is looking at, and that is why we're going in the direction that we're going. Counselor Stortaboom?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've prepared a brief statement. It's been my privilege to serve as the Chair of the Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Committee this past year, at Mayor Schaefer's pleasure, and with Counselor Jack Arnold as Vice Chair. Our monthly meetings are well-attended by committee members, including trustees from the Langley School Board of Education, and representatives from the community at large, including the Langley Community Music School, the Langley Arts Council, the seniors community, Downtown Langley Business Association, a community cultural representative, and a youth committee liaison, as well as our Director of Recreation and Cultural Services and Recording Staff. Over the past year, I've developed a greater appreciation of our city's recreational services, as well as our local culture, as demonstrated in public performances and displays of public art. Further, it has been impressed on me that while I'm Further, it has been impressed on me that while I may have an appreciation of recreation and artistic expression, many of my committee members are also most alive when activated in this field of endeavor. Recreation, public art bring life to our culture. There's been a lot of excitement and planning around the new, soon-to-be-open fourteen-point-three-million-dollar Tims Community Center. The opening of this new landmark included the possibility of input from the committee and working with council to select public art pieces to be displayed there. While providing council with good feedback on banners and a terrific wayfaring tree, the committee would have appreciated being more involved in the art selection process for Tims. Now mayor and council have determined to restructure the format of this committee to an ad hoc model. In response, the dedicated RC PAC members have produced a special resolution asking for an extension of their original mandate and an even greater role in establishing awareness and appreciation for the arts in our city. The committee members want council to endorse the value of our arts community and help provide for more music and arts opportunities in our city. Please remember that our Arts Alive Celebration is our most popular event after the Langley Good Times Cruisin', which can be considered a public art display as well. Moving forward, please consider that recreation, culture and public art are keys to a better quality of life for many of our residents and that these creative expressions can be the doorway to engagement for many of our citizens. Our community is blessed with an abundance of diverse talent that must be encouraged in a practical, meaningful and ongoing way by city council. In closing, I want to thank Mayor Schaefer for the privilege of serving as RC PAC Chair. And I want to thank every member of the committee, as well as our excellent staff, for the engagement this past year. I've grown from my experience with you, and I have learned that the practice of art is not as much about making a living as it is about celebrating the beauty and emotion in your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Albrecht?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I'm kind of torn on this to a degree because I find that it almost seemed like putting parks and, and our recreation and our, our arts, which is like extremely alive and valuable in our community. It seemed to, I don't know, I didn't sit on the, on the committee, so I'm not really speaking firsthand. But it, it seemed to me that it would water, water things down or restrict some focus in trying to get some really good or maybe better things going on in our community. So by having this separation, at least this was my thinking initially, was that by having some kind of a separation, we can have a better focus and we can get better ideas and better motivation and really grow on what we've already got. We've got a, an extremely important facet to the community, a passion that should never be dismissed or ignored, something that I really appreciate in our community and is, there's no way you can put a value on all of these things that, that happen in our community. But it just, there seemed, I wouldn't say conflicting, but to me, they're, they're just, there's a better way of trying to bring some of these things into better focus. And I may be wrong, and I've been wrong before, and I'll be wrong again, and that's okay. And that's how we learn. And I'm fine to, to continue on as we are, as it currently consists, or try this out and, and see if that works more effectively. So, sorry, I'm sounding kind of wishy-washy here at the moment. I, I just want to stress and enforce that the idea of art not being of value in our community is wrong. It is extremely important, it is extremely valuable. And I think that we could do so much more if we were allowed to let those people take, take it and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said earlier, it was the decision by council earlier to strike up a task force when is needed under the arts committee. Pardon me, under the Parks Committee. And that is what we've looked at. So further discussion? Called question? All those in favor of this recommendation? Against? It's unanimous against.
And that means?
We're gonna be, probably going to a task force when, when it's required.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that vote. I misunderstood that vote.
No, the motion is, there was a recommendation that they go with, with this. And council voted against the recommendation.
Yes, so we're gonna continue on?
No, no. No, the recommendation is right there.
Okay, well, please excuse me then. My, my understanding was to vote in support of the resolution presented by the RC PAC. I hope it can be recorded that way somehow.
Counselor Stortebroome erred in voting, so Counselor Stortebroome was the only one in favor. So the next item we have is administrative reports because the other one has been taken off the, the agenda, and that was the banners. So cut pavement policy under admin reports. And Mr. Baumhoff, you have a presentation?
Yes, I have a short presentation regarding pavement cut policy. In essence, the policy is an attempt and, and it gives the city ability to recover some costs related to pavement management. So in this presentation, I'll cover the criteria for approval, pavement restoration extents, permuty accountability for restoration, anticipated annual revenue from this policy, and just a comparison with a few other municipalities, and an example development. So the criteria for approval, all pavement cuts must be authorized through the city. So it just requires a funneling and just more better management through the city. So it's through a Langley highway use permit, complete with a pavement cut form. It would restrict pavement cuts on highways or roadways that have been constructed or rehabilitated within the last five years with the goal, obviously, to not cut fairly new pavements. So this is a diagram just showing the schematic of an excavation. And as on the diagram on the left, you can see when an excavator cuts through the asphalt, digs down underground, it undermines the asphalt. And if it's not repaired properly, you know, the city could be facing additional costs of restoration and maintenance into the, into the future. So by setting, by creating a policy, we, we mandate the width that is required to be repaired or restored on the, on the surface. And that would be, you know, substantially wider than the actual excavation portion, as you can see on the diagram on the, on the left. It's about three feet or one meter wider than the actual trench width. And then on the diagrams on the, on the right, it shows beyond that limit, it is required to go another four hundred millimeters beyond the trench width for, for paving restoration. So it sets out the criteria for pavement restoration. The permuty is accountable for the restoration. The party applying for a pavement cut permit will be held accountable for the temporary and permanent restoration. They will maintain the patch during the warranty period and repair it if necessary. Failure to do so, either restore or maintain, will result in city completing the work at the cost of the developer and recovery through their security deposit. All permuties will be charged a pavement degradation fee. So even though they've restored the asphalt to what it should be, the pavement has still been weakened, so we charge a pavement degradation fee in addition to the restoration. The land development projects will be charged a pavement reinstatement fee as part of the security deposit. If the developer completes the work, the fee minus the pavement degradation fee would be returned. The city will use this fee if the developer fails to complete the work. The estimated annual revenue gained from the degradation fee is ten thousand dollars, and it's tied to the amount of redevelopment in any given year. So it could be less or could be more, depending on the area of pavement that's cut. Compared to other municipalities, the city of Vancouver and Surrey and Coquitlam and the township of Langley all charge a pavement degradation fee. All have policies in place regulating them when pavement cuts are allowed and the terms for reinstatement. So just as an example, two lots split on Forty-eighth Avenue and two, two-tenth Street. The road was paved in two thousand twelve and cut in two thousand fourteen. So under the proposed policy, staff would have the identified special terms for reinstatement if the cut was approved. So that could involve requiring full-depth repaving as opposed to just simply patching on the surface. It could involve extending the limits of, of paving area that needs to be repaired or additional pavement degradation fee. So the revenue generated from, in this example, would be a hundred and seventy-five square meters times ten dollars per square meter, or seventeen hundred and fifty dollars for that application. So that's the proposal in a nutshell.
Oh, sorry. Move the, move the recommendation?
I'll second.
Martin and Albrecht? Counselor Albrecht?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Baumhoff, for bringing this forward. I think it's long overdue, and it's something that is necessary in order to protect our residents' investment in our community. Paving is, is a very expensive thing to do, and this will help eliminate, or hopefully eliminate, those trench settlements that people always seem to, you know, you get these little bumps in the road all the time because of the trench settlements. So I think this is very proactive and, and something that is done in other communities like you've outlined. And I'm completely in favor of this, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Further discussion? I think it's a great idea. I've been watching some of the contractors in the, in the city as they put in the pipe, you know, for what Chevron Services. And within a couple of years, it all starts to break up, and then we, the city, have to go out and pay for it.
Right.
You know, and it costs every citizen in the city some money. So I think it's a darn good idea. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor then? Against, it's unanimous four. And new business? Anything under new business? Old business? Counselor Albrecht?
I just, I just really wanted to thank members of council staff, all the volunteers and the, and everyone who participated in this past weekend's Christmas parade. It was a huge success, I think, and a little weather's not gonna dampen that Christmas spirit out there. So it was, it was really great, and this may not be the right time to bring it up, but I just wanted to make sure that I passed on my gratitude to everyone that helped out to make it so successful. So thank you.
Counselor Stortebroome?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Counselor Albrecht. You're absolutely right, it was a tremendous event. Unfortunately, the weather was a bit damp, but that's what you get on the wet coast sometimes. It rains on your parade. But thank you to Sandy Dunkley too, for all of your involvement, your ongoing commitment to our community and the activities that we, the events that we have here. Even though it rained and everybody got wet, the spirit of our community could not be dampened. And my thanks and congratulations for a wonderful event. Congratulations to the organizers. I really enjoyed it, and I look forward to next year's event already. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I must add, it was a wonderful weekend. Counselor Vandenberg, Counselor Martin, Counselor Albrecht, Counselor Stortebroome, myself, at the pancake breakfast for the kids, and to see them running around. And the pirate, who did a, the pirate that did a show there. And then for the staff that helped put it all together. It's quite an event, and to see the people in the community come out to something like this. And at our tree lighting ceremony, we did have a bit of a Griswold event when we counted down to. And it had a, I think, a slight time delay of about thirty seconds, but the, the tree did go on. And I think we're gonna look at new tree lighting procedure. Have a manual next year for this. So again, it was a great weekend, and especially to the staff and the many volunteers. The parade can't be held without the volunteers. And there were many kudos out there, especially Santa in the, in the horse-drawn carriage, so. Anything further? Well, that's it. All those in favor of adjournment?
Merry Christmas.
Mover was Albrecht and Vandenberg?